Good evening and welcome to the December 4, first 2022 Municipal Planning Commission for Smyrna. I will now call this meeting to order. Tony Dover will lead us in prayer and Mark Atkins with the pledge. Stand with me.
Please pray. Most gracious have my father, we come before you today, just thank you so much for the blessings that you've given us in our life, father, and thank you so much for this town that we live in and this country that we live in. We ask fathers who go about the business tonight, this planning commission, that you just give us guidance and wisdom and direct our actions and, and father, everything we do, we done in a manner that is pleasing to you. Christ name, amen.
Place flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tony and Mark. Citizens comments?
None at this time.
Okay, we are on to our next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the December, November 3, 2022 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting in order, notes in order?
In order to follow, chairman.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved. We are on to new business and Kevin, my understanding is the first item has been, is asked for a defer, a deferral.
They have requested deferral, yes.
Okay, so with that, we would need a motion if we so choose to defer.
Correct.
Right, counselor?
Correct. And I would make note in your deferral that it was requested by the applicant.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer as requested by the applicant.
Have a motion to defer as requested by the applicant? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defer. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is deferred. Our next item is rezoning request from Chandler Walker, 102 Williamsport Drive, rezoning R3 to PRD.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. It's for one parcel of land, just under 43 acres of property currently zoned R3. The surrounding zoning all around it is also R3. The land use plan would support medium density, single family residential development in this area. There are no streets on the major thoroughfare plan effective with this request. This development would connect, there's actually three different stub streets, streets that are stubbed into this development, actually three streets, four different stubs, two of those being Williamsport Drive, and they are proposing the development would connect both ends of Williamsport Drive together as well as extend Bonneville and High Ridge. Would also be extended into the development. My comments to you said reflect that the request of PRD is for 44 single family lots and 52 townhomes. The original submittal to us had 54 townhomes, it was reduced to 52, and so that's what was sent out. The revised plans we received yesterday actually show 54 again, so the 52 was to address some, there were some setback requirements that they weren't meeting with 50, 54. They are meeting those requirements with the 54, 54 units now. So it is 54 townhomes and not 52 is what has been requested and what's in front of you tonight. We had a few comments. Because of the topography in this area, we do have a little bit of concern about fire flow and because of that, sprinkler systems may be required, and we're not saying they will be, they may be, and, and based on the, what that fire flow is and the total square footage of the proposed residences under roof. And so that is, that's really kind of an informational comment for the developer more than anything, but I did want to point that out. The maximum slope on, again, just because of the, of the topography in this area, the maximum slope is 10% for public roadways as well as the private easement. There's a couple of lots on the very north end of this that are going to be asserted by private easement, and that would, would also have to be a maximum 10% slope. We had a question, one of the, on, one of the elevations on the townhomes, they talked about a board and batten siding, and we'd asked if that was concrete or wood, and they did indicate it is concrete, so that's been addressed. And they also added a note reflecting that no more than 10% of the overall elevation can be the accent material, and so that's also in the, on the plans as well, so that we can remove comment seven. We did, as a staff, do recommend some additional improvements in the common area. All they had, the original submittal we had was just a walking trail and then a sitting area with a grill. They have added a dog park in the townhome area as well, so that has been added. Number nine, regarding a school bus stop that has been shown now within the townhome area that it would be required there, and they have shown that now near the entrance to the townhome area and, along Williamsport Drive. The, just some of the other items we always look at when a PRD is requested, setbacks, the, the single family lots that are proposed as a part of this PRD are essentially R3 lots. They're all, they're all meeting the R3 requirements other than the front setbacks. They are proposing a 20-foot front setback, but they would have at minimum like 35-foot setback if the house has a front and rear garage. So they are still meeting the parking requirements of four parking spaces off, off street. The, so again, that's, that's the R3 or the single family portion of it. The townhome portion of the development, again with the 54 units, they all have, they're shown with two car garages, they all will also have, would also have four off-street parking spaces, and there is also guest parking provided to meet our requirements as well. So they're, they are meeting the parking and, and step back requirements that we have talked a lot about over the last couple of years, and so they are, they're meeting those requirements. Developer is here, if you have any questions, I will also stay. There may be some neighbors here. We have had several phone calls and emails the last couple of days from the neighborhood as well, and so they're, they're here again. Of course, you all have the, the authority to recognize or not recognize, but I did want to bring that up to you and let you know that. I believe that is what I have.
Questions for Kevin or staff?
Tim.
Yeah.
We might be participating in discussion voting.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Kevin, from the staff's review, and I'm assuming Stormwater's looked at this already. Any concerns there?
We haven't done it, I mean, because we don't have the detailed engineering plans yet, and Stormwater has not looked at it beyond just kind of conceptually. They do have, there's a couple areas with some streams that they're, are avoiding, and, and they've looked at where the, at least conceptually where the ponds would go and those kind of things, but that's really at this point all that's been done, because we typically look at that in detail when the, when the actual construction plans are submitted, but which would be after the preliminary plaque comes in.
And I see the development obviously has several attachments to other existing city streets, has, was there any concern about a traffic study or anything related to the additional volume?
This wouldn't meet our criteria of where it would be required as far as the amount of traffic that would be generated. It is, it does, as I was saying, there's four different streets, really basically five different locations, five streets are stubbed, five locations of where things are stubbed in, and they are, would be connecting to all of those locations, which would...
By design.
By design, would, would help distribute the traffic. It wouldn't all be have, wouldn't all have to go toward Old Nashville Highway or toward Enin Springs or toward Rock Springs, if people could go all directions, which would help with the traffic distribution at least. So there's not been a traffic, we haven't asked for a traffic study, that's certainly something that this commission could request if you wanted to. But we haven't looked at that specifically beyond, again, just where the streets will be stubbed in.
And you had made a note about the amenities, and you said they added a dog park. Is staff comfortable with the additions or changes? Are you still asking for more?
That's, that makes it a little better. I think they are meeting the requirements as far as the amount of open space and that sort of thing. You know, it would be a pavilion or something else, you know, something that would be a good addition, I think, beyond just, there's a grilling area, but there's no pavilion or picnic area or anything like that. They have areas set aside for open space without really improvements, so I think it would be good to have something, you know, at least one additional amenity of some type. I don't, I'm not suggesting some pool or pickleball courts or whatever, those kind of things, but just at least some, some kind of structural use that's beyond just what the, the open area that's, that's good as green space.
Chairman, just as an order of business, if we have one individual who is not voting, do we have a quorum remaining?
Yes.
Or do we wait until Andy shows up?
You have four.
Who's four?
You need four, yes.
Other questions for staff concerning this?
Kevin, surrounding zoning is R3?
Correct.
And this is about the second or third time that we've had someone take a look at this, is it, is it not?
Yeah, the previous primarily was R, it was, has R1 and was rezoned to R3, was the only rezoning action that's actually been taken.
Wasn't that more of a historical type thing where as we were bringing things?
Yeah, it was, yeah, because it was annexed and not zoned because there was no request for it.
Right.
Yeah. And there was, another developer was looking at it that walked away from it and never actually bought the property at one time, who was looking at it for development, and I don't know that we ever saw, I think it was R3 at the time, at that time as well, that that was withdrawn, and then the, the property owner at that time did bring it back then and, and was rezoned to R3. So this is the first time we've had an actual PRD request on it.
You mentioned that, and I was, I was looking for it and couldn't find it, you were mentioning that the single family lots were in essence R3, where have we, is there something I'm missing where I've got lot sizes on those, where they're $10,000, $10,000 square feet or more? 2.0.
Yeah, there's a minimum lot size, if you look at C 2.0.
I jumped to 2.1.
Yeah. There's a, there's a site data, and there's various things on there, and one of that, there's a chart that says single family with the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there concern about the access to the two upper lots? It looks like with a, with an easement to those as far as the grade to get to those?
Well, again, that was why we had made the comment that there would have to be a maximum 10% grade on that easement, and then the drive, the driveway too, that'll be looked at. Those will all both be multiple numbers and perhaps all of these will be critical lots, and so each one of those lots, and certainly those last two because of the steepness of the topography in that area, we would have to look at the driveway access and that sort of thing to be sure that we...
So that would be looked at at site?
If the, yes. If, if the, if the house ends up being, you know, 200, 300 feet off the road or something like that, off the, off the end of that easement, we would have to look at the, that driveway, you know?
Because I was thinking it's pretty steep through there.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commission to staff on this?
Kevin, you might want to speak to runoff. I know that's always a question when you have a hill and residents that would potentially feel like they could receive runoff from development on that hill.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to meet all of our stormwater requirements, they'll have to provide detention at minimum of a 25-year storm event. Again, that's all looked at with, with, when the development plans come in, the actual construction documents, but, but they'll have to meet those requirements, and, and they can't increase the, the water that leaves the site now beyond, you know, I mean, certainly what's going there now can still go there, but they can't increase that runoff.
Does anybody from the commission have any questions for the developer on this?
I don't know if it's the developer or Kevin, but maybe I missed it in the, in the rest of this packet, but where's the construction entrance?
There is none.
I don't, I don't think it's on here, so that might be a question. I mean, there's no access to the property other than through adjoining developed areas. The only area that's not developed is currently developing, which is directly south. There's another section of hidden hills that's coming in. So it would have, there's really no way to get to this site, kind of like the one we talked about last month, there's really no way, way to get to the site other than through existing, those are all existing neighborhoods, they're all existing accepted public streets as well, so.
That is a concern I would have, obviously. I mean, that's going to be a lot of development, and the only way you're going in there is through some, some subdivision street, and I know that that's going to be disruptive to the neighbors, at least during the construction period.
And I think on that parcel, being where it's located, at some point, it's now or later.
Right.
It's, it's going to develop into something because it's been attempted so many times already. I think the, the challenging part of this piece is the topography.
Right.
And, you know, the slope. The single family part is, is, looks pretty attractive. I know the concern, some emails and contacts that I've had probably evolved more around the density portion of it, not the single family portion of it. Any of that, none of that's been designative for 55-plus. Has it 55 senior living?
No.
None of that has?
No.
Okay.
In fact, the townhome units are basically three-story units with a kind of a garage is the bottom and then the two stories above.
I can see them here, they're, I mean, it's attractive, everything's attractive. I know there's concerns from the neighbors having townhomes above them, so to speak, and...
Sure.
Looking down on their properties, and that's some of the stuff I've heard. It's been quite a busy day, so. I, I'd kind of like to hear from somebody, may, maybe a person from both sides, if it's okay.
Yeah, I think what, I think what we'll do is we'll recognize the developer and then I'll allow someone from the community to speak. So if you could come forward and give us your name and...
The community's all looking like, who's that going to be, right?
And just to let you know, I've kind of heard from the community myself today, and I'll probably have some comments as well, but if you'd like to come out and give us your name and address, please.
Caleb Spearing, and I live on 103 Maple Street in the Depot District of Smyrna.
Okay. Mark?
Kind of tell us a little bit about the architecture, structure, the need for the density. Educate me and, and the commission and probably some people.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So ultimately, I was very nervous today, leading up to the day, because I said, I mean, I, I want to get this passed, I want to do this project, and I was praying before this with my team, and I realized I got two jobs up here. And it's, one is to every word that I say that I honor Jesus, and then two, it is to hopefully get y'all and the community to see my heart behind this project rather than what's on the piece of paper. And so you ask about the architecture and everything, my entire career that I've been doing what I'm doing, it has always been, am I going to do something that I can go in there and make a quick buck, throw some stuff up and move on? Or am I going to go in there and I'm going to do a product that's excellent, that brings benefit to the entire community? And this happens to be in the community that I live in. All of my businesses are operated out of Smyrna. We're going to bring that excellence to this community right here. We're not, we're going to put a high-end product that is in there. The single family homes, we're looking at, majority of them will be brick, there will be some hardy cement board on them. Obviously, there's going to be zero vinyl that we throw up on any of these houses. They're all going to be, we're hoping between the 2,200 and 3,500 square foot.
What would that price point be in today's market?
That's really difficult to tell, but I would say in today's market, probably 500 to 3/4, to 750,000 for the single family. Our hope for the townhome, again, is, is the density that we're trying to get here, because those two back lots, the reason why we're not putting stuff on those two back lots is because of what y'all have already addressed, is the topography. It, there's a slope there that really makes it difficult to build any homes back there. So we're having to get our density in these townhomes down below, and the townhomes are looking for, in today's market, again, I don't know where it's going to be, by the time we get these out, we're probably going to be more in the high threes, low fours. And in today's market, as you know, being a realtor, that's affordable, how, more of an affordable housing to be able to be there, and so that's why we're trying to keep those townhomes on the more affordable side. They're still going to be very nice, hard brick, cement board, a very good, very clean architecture. We're not trying to come in there and throw up something that's going to just get, get in there, shake our hands and leave. The reason why, I have a bought-in to this development, because this is where I live, that's where I do business, I want this development to be something special and not just something that I went in and made a quick buck and walked away from. That's my goal, that's my heart, that's my intention for this development.
Have you had any inner, any interaction at all with any of the neighbors out there at all? Have you, as, as you own the property, I assume, right?
I do own the property.
Has there been any interaction at all with anybody that lives along this?
I've had one interaction with a son of someone that lived there, and then I've heard some, some things from the community. One, of course, it's the townhomes, the other ones, the wildlife, and I'd like to point out on this, this is a 42-acre development, and I would say around 20 acres of it is still going to remain wooded. I had the opportunity to go in here and clear cut all of these trees and make some money off, off the timber, and we chose to go in there and just select cut to leave the privacy. That's the goal here. All the buffers around the edges, want to leave the woods there to provide more privacy. And where the walking trails are, we want to leave as much wooded area to create a privacy from not only our future residents that are going to be there, but also the existing residents that are surrounding that point.
That's all I have, Tim.
All right. Anybody else have a question? Caleb, I do have a question for you. Why not an R3 project here? And the reason I'm asking is, this is a well-established R3 neighborhood, and, gosh, it goes back to the 80s, maybe, could be potentially a little bit further back than that. And I think that's a, that's a concern of mine, is that, you know, anytime that I've looked at this or thought about this parcel developing, I thought it would, developing when, with what is keeping with what's there already. So why did we not develop this or bring this to us in the way of an R3?
Sure, absolutely. Ultimately, what it comes down to is we needed, with not being able to develop those back two lots back there. If we could develop those back two lots, the density that we would be putting in here is around 158 homes. Right now, we're doing about 98 with the townhomes, but not being able to develop that back portion really takes away a lot of the revenue that we would hopeful, that would come off of this project to be able to make it viable. So the density is really there to help make, it's just like not buying that one piece of parcel and making it just a couple homes. Do you have something you want to?
Yeah, and just to add, and I'm Andrew Wiseman...
Give us your name and address.
Andrew Wiseman, 314 Moore Court, Franklin, Tennessee. I'm the civil engineer on the project, and we did this layout, and partially due to, you know, like he's saying, the back portion of the lot with the steep slopes, not being able to develop this as an R3 to get the maximum density that you could out of it, because of the topography, you know, the amount of infrastructure that Caleb's going to have to put in for these four connector roads that the community is going to benefit from to activate these streets, you know, the density had to come somewhere to be able to do that project, and why it sat on the shelf for so long. Nobody can justify the amount of homes that you can fit with just, you know, supplying the single family residential look. And that's, that's generally the intent, why we took some of that density and tried to concentrate, concentrated down here in the southeast corner with buffers to try to shield it from, you know, the existing residents and, and try to keep that courtyard interior where the noise and, and where people are playing and activities are going on are going to be shielded by the houses themselves. So we've tried to put a little bit of thought into those, you know, non-community disturbing activities with this design and as well as, you know, protecting the, the stream buffers that we are, we know are there, you know, that's undevelopable land that we can't take advantage of as well. So that was also a consideration with trying to get more density out of this lower portion of the site. So, you know, these, these townhomes are tucked back, they are in a, in a, in a highly populated area that is an existing R3 community, but at the same time, we're, we're still preserving a, a ton of land and, you know, and for all intents and purposes, we could carve out some of the land of those two larger estate lots and make those more conservation easements around the developable area for those two lots, and have even more as protected conservation area if we chose to, and if that was something that the town would like. And talking about 55-plus, I think that's something certainly that Caleb has expressed that he could look into doing on some of the townhome units as well, adding that in if that's at the request of the town. I think there's a lot of things that we can do to work together to make a project that not only adds benefit to the community by connecting up these streets, giving people alternative ways through their existing developments, but just trade-off is at some density that is concentrated that doesn't look like everything else in the community, and that's, that's the hard part to sell. So that's what we're here to try to do.
Okay.
And I heard something about the construction entrance, you know, like, like was, was said, so, at some point, this would have to develop, even if it was an R3, and we would have to use existing roads, so it would be off of one of the major stubs, and we would probably pick Williamsport since it is the main drag in and out as one of our construction entrances.
And the south side of Williamson Port is already off to the left, is already being developed as we speak out there, and that's their construction entrance is through right there as well.
I have two questions for you. You'd heard Kevin's comment about, you know, the additional amenities, potentially a pavilion or something in the green space. Obviously, it's not on the plan now. You guys...
And, and we have landscape architects, and that's what they do all day, and that interior courtyard space was left open for a reason, because we don't really know what the form and function of it is. Well, I mean, we've added a few things and could add a pavilion in there next to the grills, as was mentioned, for some seating area, but at the end of the day, it's ultimately a community-activated interior courtyard space in that, that we didn't really add as an amenity that I think could be, it's open playing field, also in the small green area here. There is a potential that we could, looking at topo, that we could do some sort of playground, a smaller playground right off the street that would be activated by the sidewalks here. That could be a benefit to all the communities here with some amount of play toys, field-activated stuff that, you know. Is a potential, but it is steep grade, so again, we just got to look at that. But there is potential for more, and like I said, I think there's other things that we can do besides a dog park in that interior courtyard with a pavilion or some other form of activated space.
Sure. I appreciate that, and I, and I do think, looking at the, you know, the renderings for the development, I think, you know, they're good-looking, right? It's a good-looking development, but I also would think that in a community like that, you would want something more from an amenities perspective, you've got a nice walking trail, and so I, I hear what you're, where you're going at, but of course, when we approve a PRD, it's what's on, you know, the paper in front of you. The second question I have for you is, is related to those two additional lots, right? Kevin was talking about the, the grade needed to be less than 10%. Is, from your engineering perspective, is that the... Is, from your engineering perspective, is that the reason that you're not doing anything up in there? That you, you couldn't get that, that engineering grade for the road?
We have identified, and you'll see it throughout our site plan, there are steep slopes on the side slopes. There's a ridge that runs along where we have this driveway. And these slopes are a lot less than what's falling off to the right and to the left. And so the idea is, is that we keep the road where we can manage the ten percent. And same thing that we've done here, we kept along the ridges where we could. And to maintain that ten percent to connect, make these connections. But that, the, the simple fact that we have these, the driveway along the ridge helps us achieve that maximum ten percent. Um, now, the houses will sit off the hill a little bit, and we'll be looking at the driveways to make sure that they're less than ten percent and have adequate drainage around the garage. Um, but other than that, I'm, I'm not concerned with the, that, at least those two. The bigger challenge is connecting the Hidden Hills to the Cedar Forest, that road connection there. That was the more challenging to get at ten percent, and we think we've achieved it. So, now you don't see it in the plan, but we feel like we've done enough grading effort on it to, to make sure that we've achieved that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Did anyone from the community want to say anything? And you, you don't have to, I'm just, make it available if you'd like to. Give us your name and address.
Good evening, Joshua Kubli, six-hundred Excalibur Court. Um, really wasn't planning on having an opportunity to speak tonight, but I think, um, based on the comments that I've seen flowing through our neighborhood, Facebook and Nextdoor and chatting with, I'm sure a number of you already are probably well-aware of the concerns that they have. I think in terms of traffic flow, um, coming up Williamsport with the construction, obviously, that street is very narrow to begin with, um, so you've got some issues just accessing the property. I think most of what I've heard from neighbors is the concern in rezoning it from R-three to PRD, um, wanting to try to keep in line with everything else that's going on and trying to keep the development down in terms of, you know, slowing things down just a little bit. Um, obviously, having a lot of town homes back there is a, a pretty significant, um, concern from everybody that I've had a chance to speak with. You know, really, I think that's about, that's really all I have to share. Uh, I think, based on what we've heard, I'm sure it's a wonderful development. I think that there's, um, if there was a way to try to keep that R-three and look at more of a single-family home situation, obviously, I know that there's, when you're developing a piece of property, I've had a chance to do that myself. You have to make a certain amount of money in order to do that. And obviously, there's a lot of infrastructure that has to be put in place here with a lot of the connecting streets. Um, so I'm not sure what there is to do about that. But just expressing, I guess, representing a number of neighbors, that those are the, the chief concerns that everyone has had, and I'm sure they've had a chance to voice that already with, with many of you. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Is there anything else that you guys wanted me to mention?
Uh, I'll, I'll speak, I know Joshua. Joshua, actually, it was pointed out, I'm a realtor, well, Joshua was a client of mine. And, uh, thank you, Joshua.
You're welcome.
But I know where he lives. And so, uh, back when I think we even were looking at the house, I told him, I said, this hill right here will develop. Don't know when, and I don't know what it'll be, but it will, because I wanted him to make sure, you know, that he knew that that was raw land. That said, um, I guess my question would be for the people who have some concerns. And I hear you, R-three would be the preferred route, that's what it's already zoned. That's single-family, it matches the same lot sizes and everything that everybody owns around there. Is there a trade-off that you've talked about that would make you more comfortable, where you could work with the developer? Because here's my concern, that's gonna develop at some point. It just will. Uh, I've often said this, I don't mean it the way it's gonna sound, but too many times, I've, I've seen things uh, get denied or turned down only to come back worse. So, it's like, be careful what you wish for in a, in a sense, right? So, is there a trade-off that maybe the developer and some neighbors could have a little neighborhood meeting? Get to know one another, ask some questions, and, and find out if this is a fit for everybody or not? Because I hear both sides of it, and I have, uh, strong concerns for both sides, right? I know what a developer has to do to make something work. It's what I do for a living as well. And I understand how that has to work. Many times, uh, neighbors or neighborhoods don't understand, they don't do that for a living, right? They don't get that. But we wanna be sensitive to the fact that this affects them. This is coming into a neighborhood where nothing else around has town homes. So, I'd like to find out if there's a way, if you guys can come together, defer this for thirty days if that's the case, to allow, allow a little, maybe down at the Red Bicycle, everybody gets together, you know, so let's talk about what we feel as neighbors and what we need as developers, and find a solution. I think that's, uh, how I kinda feel about it right now. Because I, it's a great development. I, I don't wanna sit here and say it's not. It is a really good classy-looking development, and I, I see them. And I know he, he builds a wonderful product and he makes it look good. His heart's in it, I promise you it is. But there's neighbors here, and their hearts are in their homes. And so I wanna make sure we find a solution. I'd feel better about just finding a solution. Is that something, am I seeing heads yes or no? Is that, uh, you may be on a timeline as a development company, and neighbors, how do you feel about that? Is that something? Well, I'm, I'm gonna ask the chairman to recognize you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, look, I'll, yes, I will, I recognize you, this way we can have an open question.
I'm Erica Williams, six-oh-eight Excalibur Court.
I got your email today.
Yes, you did.
I've already answered you.
I think I sent another one. Thank you for answering. Um, I echo what Josh said about this. I, I mean, I think any of us that are in the neighborhood would be willing to have discussions. My, my biggest concern, I just want to share what he said, was, was the town homes. And my fear is, and maybe Caleb, I believe is his name, can answer this, but once it's zoned PRD, does he have to move forward with this plan?
Yes, yes.
And it's that, so he can't change and add any more towns?
PRD is formed on paper.
Okay. Because that was one of the concerns that we had. If it's zoned this way, will it allow him to build more? Um, but to answer your question about, you know, would we wanna speak? Sure. What would our preference be, I think, and I think I'm speaking for everyone that has been part of Nextdoor and Facebook communication, R-three, and not zoning it for the PRD. Um, the streets already are busy. Saint Francis is a thoroughfare between Home Depot and Hidden Hills. This will, I believe, increase the traffic flow, because people are going to cut through Home Depot, Old Nashville Highway, up Williamsport, through this subdivision to Hidden Hills. We're going to see more traffic. We don't have sidewalks in the street. I mean, it's already what I would consider a high-traffic area. This is going to add, especially with fifty-eight town homes. And the number of people, two cars per town home, let's say, and then all of the houses. So that concerns me. And then the other thing that Josh didn't mention is the schools. And I know this is gonna be developed, I know that. We all know Smyrna's growing. We're not going to stop that. Rock, Rock Spring, Rocky Fork, excuse me, those schools, I think, can accommodate the number of students that could potentially be in these homes. I'm very concerned about Smyrna High School. My son is a sophomore there. They are crowded in that school. And as we continue to bring in these types of developments, I think we're putting a pinch on our educational system. And I-
Let me jump in here, because school-wise, that's not our purview.
I know, I know it's not. I just wanted to throw that in there.
Yeah, they have to keep up and grow.
But I think, though, you all approving things, if the schools are in crisis mode with overcrowding.
No, I don't disagree, but, but there are some, some parts that you mentioned, and I don't wanna get in a back and forth here. This is for the public as much as anything. There, when these roads connect, and, and I said this a while ago, that's by design, right? Those cuts were all put in there for future usage. And so, your development unfortunately developed before sidewalks were required and things like that. But we're making those improvements now on our new stuff. So, it's getting better. We hope it's getting better, but I hear you. That's why I wanted to hear you, okay? So, I appreciate it. We don't wanna get into long conversations tonight, so, uh, but thank you for your feedback. And I, I'd just like to see everybody come together and, and find a happy solution. That land's some nice land. They wanna develop it. Hundred-and-fifty-eight homes, it could be, turns out to be ninety-eight. So, the could-be part could be more traffic, essentially, right? So, just, you gotta think through that, too. Town homes, uh, they're, they're this magic word that everybody likes to hate. Uh, it's affordable homes anymore for young people, right? We have a lot of it. We probably don't need a lot more of it. We get that, too. Uh, but developments now, these are what we see in developments. We're starting to see neighborhoods that are combined, right? It's not just flat-level, single-family homes much anymore. Uh, it's a, it's a neighborhood with amenities and sidewalks and those kinds of things. And these are the mixes that kinda makes the neighborhood the neighborhood. So, it's the trend, if you will. I don't know if it means we have to do it. But it's sort of the trend for development, has a, a good mix, a good blend. And I thought he brought a good product to us. But I would love to see you guys, as a neighborhood and as a developer, have coffee somewhere and say, here's our concerns, and here's what we think we can do, and let that get ironed out in some way, come back to us and see if we have a better mix, a better plan that everybody can work with. Does that seem fair?
Sure.
Yeah, and, you guys can sit down.
Thank you.
I, I continue to share the concerns. Just on a side note, we're gonna be talking about some, an addition to Smyrna High School, a little bit later in the agenda tonight, so.
I knew that.
Uh, but I wanted you to have a chance to get that out. And, and again, it is really outside our purview as far as that goes. And Mark's right, when you're, when you're going into communities and you see a road, uh, that has a stub on it, uh, it's gonna develop, and, and I'll give you a real-life story. I, I lived on Saint Francis. And, uh, Saint Francis dead-ended, um, at the top of the hill where Hidden Hills is. And I remember one day, I was out cutting the yard, heard a big boom, and a cloud of smoke come down the roadway, and before you know it, there's Hidden Hills. But, you know, I kind of expected it, um, so there's that. Now, here's the other thing. Right now, uh, I am still in favor of an R-three project here. And that's what I would like to see brought in. I do see the benefits of the road connections, and I think that's, you know, I think that's, uh, would be incredibly helpful for the neighborhood. But I'm not really ready to commit to say that I'm a hundred percent on board with this project. I understand the neighborhood's concern, and if I knew that those concerns were lessened, then I may be more inclined to, um, change my mind on it. So, that's where I'm falling right now. And, and keep in mind, I also acknowledge that when I'm looking at this, this is a very nice-looking project, and I do see the benefit of the road connections. But at the same time, I have concerns about changing the character of a neighborhood that's been that way for thirty or forty years. So, any other discussion?
I did have one question, this, the developer was able to work with the community in some fashion, and we were able to come back with something that pleases town and, and the community as well. Uh, I mean, the, the ultimate reality is, we're looking for something that can give these connections in a cost-effective manner. And so, understanding, you know, we can't give everything that they want, which would be all R-three. We already know that doesn't work for, for a development, right? So, we know that, and, and if there's some number that we can put to this, saying, you know, if we can come back to a town home number that says, this number is acceptable, um, and it can't be three, right? So, I mean, is that what we're looking for?
That's the largest concern I've heard from emails and things. They know it's gonna develop.
Right.
At some point, right? It's a piece of forty-some odd acres, uh, they know it will. But, uh, I, I think that's why I'd like to see everybody kinda just try to come together, soften that density a little bit somehow.
And, and I think we would appreciate the opportunity to defer to, to work through this a little bit more. And even if it is, if we aren't able to reach an agreement with them, if we could bring something back that, that is more-
And if you guys, whoever, I know Josh got up and spoke, so did Ms. Williams. If, if the two of you who I heard Ms. Williams say, their social media, believe me, we know social media, right? Uh, could come, come together maybe with Mr. Spearing and his group in, in a fashion that you can combine a, a joint effort, maybe come down to the restaurant where he is and, and talk through this a little bit. Just get ideas. Just get to know each other and get ideas, and see if there's a fit. But right now, I'm kinda inclined to agree with Chairman Morrell here that, uh, R-three seems to be the best product possible. Now, I hear you, but maybe there's a way to soften this in a way that it's not so dense, and it gives them some relief as far as the density, and come together. Maybe add some fifty-five pluses to the open town homes. I'm big on senior living. Everybody watches this. If somebody's fifty-five, I want them to have housing in, in town, fifty-five or older. Maybe that's a solution in there somewhere.
And I definitely think, especially along the, the southern portion there, or the western portion, really, I think that would be the best place for those, you know, it activates them and gives us an opportunity to widen them out, and it would actually reduce the number of them.
It would reduce and take the density down. Plus fifty-five plus, um, that's a different, that's a different clientele, right?
Two-story.
We call it senior living. It's softer, it's not as, it's not as hard as, you know, just open to anybody. It's fifty-five plus. And seniors need places to live in town, too, just like our young people, and so.
Plus, you know, the seniors don't have the impact on traffic for schools or-
Parking cars.
Parking cars.
It's a, it's a great location for the hospital and all that over there, too. So, that's something I think maybe you guys can put your heads together on and come up with something.
But to level set, this would be not marketed, it would be deed-restricted to that if you guys were so inclined and the community were so inclined.
So, it would be deed-restricted to only fifty-five could purchase?
That's what we did. One person in that household must be fifty-five years old or older. And it is deed-restricted that way, because otherwise, it's not fifty-five plus.
And to a certain extent, it appeals to that fifty-five age gap.
That's called targeted housing, and we're talking about restricted. We're talking about more restricted.
So, so another thing I wanna ask, and when we were talking about PRDs are formed, plan form, uh, when, when approved, you know, the, the lot shapes and some of the, you know, the sizes of these lots may morph over time just to add and take from, to add to detention areas if it's needed for more area.
That can come through staff approval.
Yeah, as long as it's not over the, under the ten thousand square foot.
You just can't change the PRD.
Right.
Can't be under ten thousand square feet, you can't add density, you know, yeah.
The, the major stuff that would have to come back to town.
If the lines need to switch, move a little bit to make, you know, stormwater work or whatever.
I just wanted, I heard that differently, so I just wanted to make sure.
And, and for the, for the neighborhood to understand, if we were to me, move for it with a PRD, and even if it were a PRD and all the lots were ten thousand square feet or more, it gives us a lot more control over the types of materials, you know, uh, we can do more with setbacks. Uh, we, we can do a lot more with what's going there. In other words, someone can just do R-three and throw in a bunch of vinyl homes. Because I know what the neighborhood's like, and I know the nice brick homes and the, you know, the cement fiberboard and the things, the, the preferred materials that do not impact the integrity of the neighborhood. So, when we do a PRD, it gives us as a commission and as a council and a planning staff a lot more control to make sure the end result is what everybody wants to see.
It's like Tony said, you know, the, the dynamics of the, um, amenity packages and things like that are all-
Open space requirements.
Yeah, it's, it's all required as part of the PRD, if, once, if we were to go there, then we can mandate a little bit more control there and oversight.
Well, all that being said, then I guess the, as the advocate, we would request that it get deferred so we have the thirty days to have the opportunity to meet.
Y'all get together. Find a way to get together.
Okay, if you could give us your name and-
Sherri Butler. Uh, my question is, um, for the amenities that they are speaking of, dog parks, walking trails, is that gonna benefit everyone in Cedar Forest, Hunter's Point, or just his development? is that going to benefit everyone in Cedar Forest, Hunter's Point, or just his development?
Are you paying HOA fees?
Nope.
Are you going to have an HOA? So, you'd have to be a member of the HOA.
It could be open. It's open park right now. We have plenty of parking per the town's new request now, but there is a lot of open parking down by that dog park in the lower left corner that would be available to the community at large. We wouldn't be able to police who comes and goes.
So, he's telling you if you sneak up there, you can get away with it.
Just sneak in, hop the fence.
That's what I heard.
I do know that the folks that live in this area, we do have beautiful homes and we love them, and a part of the reason that we did purchase them is because we have private backyards. And that means a lot. It's hard to find a private backyard.
I often tell people in my business, if you want to control what's behind you, you better own it. Because that's, otherwise, you know.
The city could just buy that little square there. And then the other thing I wanted to add, if you guys are considering doing condos for, you know, the elderly folks, I do not believe that they're going to want to climb through flights of stairs.
Well, that's what he was talking about. It would soften the density because it drops the elevations down and widens them out.
Okay.
Therefore, you're not going tall enough. You're going more flat.
And typically, you'll see a master on the first floor and then a bedroom or two up and for, you know, family that visits. But we're kind of getting way out.
Okay, just some questions. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Okay, so, I heard a request for deferral, so.
I'll make a motion to defer by request of the applicant.
Okay, second. So, I have a motion to defer at the request of an applicant and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is deferred. Under our final plats is Harts Brants Village, Phase One, five twenty-eight Rock Springs Road, owner/developer Regent Homes LLC.
Yeah, this is the, just a plaque for Phase One of Harts Brants Village. This is a townhome project that we approved the site plan recently. This is really just for Phase One of this. This is dedicating the right-of-way along Rock Springs Road as well as the public utility easements within, access easements and those kind of things. Again, they are dedicating the right-of-way for Rock Springs Road as required, and the only comment we really had left was to, that the owner needs to sign it with the Mylar before they bring it in. But with that comment, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments, so have a second. Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item is re-subdivision of Lot One, Janie Smith subdivision, thirty-seven thirty-eight Gamble Lane, owner/developer Lana Elrez.
Yeah, this is, it's three lots in the R-one zone, three lots on three-point-three-four acres. We had a few comments, which were kind of the first three, with all, all these comments would need to remain. We actually did not receive paper copies from the developer on this one for some reason. We kept asking for it and never received it. We only had one copy. So, for whatever reason, we never got them, but this plaque was submitted, so we had to process it and put it on your agenda. So, we do have, it is on your iPad and your digital copy, and we got it on screen there. The first three, all these comments would need to remain. We do not receive revised plans. The first three are standard comments. The fourth one is regarding the major thoroughfare plan in Gamble Lane, so they do need to show a right-of-way dedication thirty feet from the center line. Number five, we'd ask them to label the existing utilities and fire hydrants. Had the road on the plaque as shown as Gamble Road. It should be Gamble Lane. That's comment six. Comment seven, they will need to extend public water and sewer to the far side of Lot Three, and so they do need to submit those water and sewer plans. They will also be required to extend a sidewalk along Gamble Lane for the entire property frontage. There is an existing detached accessory structure on Lot One they need to show. It would be on kind of the west side. There is an existing house on Lot One. They need to show that detached structure as well. The, they had, do have the zoning is mislabeled and some setbacks are shown incorrectly. So, we'd ask them to show those correctly. They are also, because that side setback is incorrect, they are showing that the existing house would not meet the setbacks, so they do need to move the lot line between one and two. They had a parcel number incorrect. Comment number thirteen is just, is really for information that's not needed anymore regarding the rest of the county development tax sticker because they changed how they collect that. And then fourteen is regarding the driveway culverts. They need to show those, and then the existing septic system needs to be shown for Lot One. Again, we asked, asked the question as well, is that going to be removed since there appears to be, they're going to tie on the sewer? So, again, all those comments would need to remain. We as a staff are okay with looking at those administratively if you feel comfortable with that. If you're not, if you want, then we would be, if you want to see the revised plaque incorrectly, obviously, maybe see the factual physical copy in front of you. If you wanted to defer this thirty days, that would be, you can't do that one time. Understate law, one time.
So, we're working on the January.
January fifth agenda, yes.
Working on that meeting right now, potentially.
We already got two items on there.
Yeah. What's the commission's thought on this?
I'm fine with staff.
I agree.
Yeah.
Is everybody good with staff?
I'm reluctant because it's kind of a mess. And we don't have our paperwork and, like, come on, people. But I will agree. If you want to go forward with it, I'll agree with staff.
Okay. All right. Well, it's, any other discussion? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll move to approve with staff approval and all staff comments.
Okay. I have a motion to approve with staff comments.
And staff oversight.
And staff oversight of the final approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to site plans. The first one is Florence Road, Stories Two, seventy-eighty-five Florence Road. Owner/developer Sean Saunders.
This is a site plan that was previously approved early last year, looking to get building permits for it, and it has since expired, so that is the reason that they are bringing this plan back to you again. It is an addition of the Florence Road self-storage, which is across Florence Road is Phase One. This will be Phase Two as part of it. It would be six buildings that would be part of this development. It is bordered on all three sides by residential development, so you are looking at a heavier buffer regarding a type C and a type D buffer along those sides due to those residential districts abutting a industrial district. So, they are showing for that, those landscape buffers as appropriately. Designer view, the buildings that they are showing, interior buildings are to be constructed with metal siding and metal railup doors similar to the storage units shown in Phase One. The buildings facing Florence Road are showing an elevation utilizing brick or stone. Elevations have now been provided for buildings E and F, however, they're not consistent with what was approved for the PID. The exterior units facing the residential districts have to have masonry walls. Plans show to have a metal backing to them, so we just need those elevations to be revised to meet the approved PID. Standard comments, one and two will remain. We had a staff comment regarding the, first one regarding a plaque showing the dedication of the right-of-way from the center line of Florence as well as the waterline easement per the approved PID. Staff had to receive a plaque showing such. We just will have to review that administratively. So, that is in the process of being completed at this time. Comment two is regarding the architectural elevations for the buildings E and F and meeting the approved PIDs. And then comment three is regarding the construction type of the buildings. We just had a comment showing they are type two. We just need to be further described whether it's type two A or type two B. So, with that, all those comments will remain, and we would recommend approval with those comments.
So, again, is there anything between this and the previous approval?
Exact same plan.
Exact same plan, okay. Thank you.
Have we communicated about the elevations as far as what was, what we're requiring in the way of masonry facing the Florence?
We didn't receive revised elevations until this week, so when the letters go out to the applicant and such, it'll be noted and conversed to them at that time as well.
I mean, it was a part of their original PID approval and the original site plan approval was on there as well, so they've been made aware of it.
Yeah, I know we've had one instance of this, and we may be talking about another one here shortly, so I just want to make sure that we're, and I do believe that we're communicating clearly when this is involved, but they know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you're comfortable with the C and the D buffer areas?
It's a type D basically.
Are they all D?
Yeah. It's basically the same landscaping as a C, but it has a berm in addition to.
I know that we had extensive discussions about this at planning and council that led to the final approval of this, so if we're there and essentially not changing anything, we're good. Well, I am anyway. Anything else for Mitchell? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to Marlo Smyrna, Genie Lane, owner/developer Gray Star Development East LLC. Is that deferred?
That has been withdrawn.
That's withdrawn, okay. So, we'll move on to Smyrna High School additions and renovations, one hundred Bulldog Drive, owner/developer Rutherford County Board of Education.
Rutherford County Board of Education has submitted plans to us for a addition on to Smyrna High School. The additions, there's three of them. Total additions are to be ninety-five thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet in size. The, most of the addition will be the addition of classrooms on to the west side of the building. It is a three-story, eighty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven-square-foot classroom building. There is also proposed to be an addition of a drama stage storage addition that is three-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet in size. I'd be on the front portion of the building, and then in the rear would be a three-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten-square-foot kitchen addition. Parking required number of spaces based on the overall development is one-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty. Existing stays eight-hundred-and-six, and they are not proposing to add any extra spaces. They are proposing to keep it the same at eight-hundred-and-six with the addition on to the west side of the building. There is, it is an existing parking lot at this time, so there would be some modifications to the existing lot in order to add these spaces back, which are currently existing, so they wouldn't be losing any. But with the addition of extra classrooms and such, there would not be an overall addition to the number of parking spaces at the site.
So, we're increasing classrooms, the number of classrooms, but we're net zero on parking spots.
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Architecture elevation for the building primarily brick with an accent of cast stone. That'd be on the western elevation, which is that primary addition. Had a couple standard comments, all to remain, and then a couple staff comments to go over. Staff comment one was mainly an informational comment, but just wanted them to know that any chemical spills must be properly stored, and if they are spilled, must be cleaned up as soon as possible. Comment two regarding the building elevations labeled incorrectly for directions, that has been addressed. Comment three is regarding a utilities comment regarding the grease trap sizing. That comment, the applicant has addressed the comment. Long-winded is more of a utilities comment issued to take up with the applicant and figure out on their end of it, so we're going to leave that comment to remain. Comment four is regarding the number of parking spaces discrepancy. The ordinance requires thirteen-fifty, and they're leaving at eight-hundred-and-six, so more of a statement of what the ordinance requires and what the applicant is proposing with this proposed plan. Comment five is regarding the drive aisles around the building. Need to be a minimum of twenty-six foot, and they have done so, so comment five can be removed. Comments one, three, and four will remain. Two and five can be removed. With that, staff would recommend approval with comments.
Okay, anything from the commission?
Yeah, just a question about number four. I'm confused, right? I mean, are we just making a statement that says, by the way, you don't meet our ordinance? Or are we expecting that they're going to come back with five-hundred-and-six more, five-hundred-and-fifty more square parking?
We're making that statement. They have, I actually spoke yesterday, it was yesterday, it may have been Tuesday, I think it was yesterday, with the head of school, the construction engineering head at the school board. And essentially, he said the principal would be fine if they didn't even add back because she has a bunch of empty parking spaces today, every day. They don't believe they need any additional parking. They did, as Mitch stated, they were going to actually be a reduction in spaces. They did come back and they have added to where they're going to be basically net zero as far as the spaces. You know, as the, our ordinance would require more. They don't believe they have, they don't believe they have the need. They also don't believe they have the room to add them. And so, without, I guess, creating some sort of structured parking.
So, just to be clear, our point of number four is informational only?
Yes, because it, that's our, certainly our, and we believe we should go on record.
Sure.
If there is an issue that comes about, because they're saying there is no issue, but if it does become an issue, they're adding, basically, they're going to a capacity of twenty-five-hundred students, which they're, and they have twenty-two-hundred there now, roughly. And so, they don't, there's not an issue with twenty-two-hundred, you know. What, how it was related to me is, students aren't driving to school anymore.
Sure. And I'm fine with that. I just want to be sure what our expectation was by putting the item on the staff comments.
That's, you know, as, you know, we've had a couple, in the past, we had a parking issue before. We had, I think it was a landscaping requirements at Rocky Fork Elementary and Middle, and they didn't meet designer view based on their landscaping, and we told them that, and, you know, they, as the school board, they do have some authority higher than us.
So, is it actually even enforceable in our?
Possibly not. I mean, they would, it's only been in the recent past we've even seen plans, you know, since Mr. Lee became on our commission, and so Stewart's Creek, all three Stewart's Creek schools never came to this body at all.
I think it's a good gesture.
Yeah, and they are, you know, they're meeting our, from an architectural standpoint, it's going to be a nice-looking building and all those things. So, I mean, I think they're doing a lot, so. And they did, the original plans did not have twenty-six-foot wide drive aisles, which is very important for the fire department with a three-story building. They have made those changes. So, they've made some changes that are positive as well.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Okay, it looks like this could possibly be our last item under site plans. Smyrna Storage Building, thirteen-seventy Hazelwood Drive, Suite Two Zero Four, owner/developer Akbar Arab.
This is another site plan that was previously seen by the body and approved. This was back in July of twenty-twenty-one. Since then, the building. Since then, the building has had permits applied for and has been constructed. The applicant was getting near finishing the product and has finished the building in metal. Plans previously approved required a mixture of Evis and brick, and that was per the approved plans. And as constructed with metal, they are requesting come back before the body to approve it as constructed with entirely metal. And as that, staff would recommend denial due to non-conformance with the designer view manual.
This was clearly communicated during the site plan approval?
Yeah, I mean, the elevations which were approved by you all had, didn't meet designer view.
And somewhere along the lines, someone forgot, I guess, or...
The applicant is here, he, where he was here. He may have left.
Would you, would you like to speak?
Yes.
If you could come up and give us your name, please?
My name is Akbar Arab. We purchased this building from Mr. Sam, Salmon Puri, BBB Auto Market. He was, he was going to go ahead and build it behind his building and on, next to the code's office. And the building sat there for, for a long time, and he told us that it's, he, he's just selling us the structure and the purlings and the roof. So we thought we were just getting structure and the roof. And so we informed our architect to redesign something, because we didn't have any exterior facade. So he, he designed it as a brick and Evis to match the existing building. But after we get the delivery of the product, we found out that we had the siding delivered to us as well. He didn't know that, so...
Did he just build it at that point?
Pardon me?
Did he just decide he had the wrong material, so we got to build it with what we got? Or did, did anybody bring that to your attention, that the wrong materials were delivered?
No, no, no. It wasn't wrong material. He had the, he had purchased the building. He sold us the metal building with the roofing material. All the components were there. But he, he thought that they didn't have the exterior facade. He, he, but when we got it, we, we knew, we, and we started putting the building up, we found out that we have the exterior facade. We purchased all of that from Mr. Puri. So we put it up, and we, we just wanted to get a variance, so we can leave the metal building as it is, because this is, if you notice, this building is right behind the offices and the retail spaces, and it's not visible from anywhere on Hazelwood Drive or Old Nashville Highway or any surrounding. The only way you can see this building is, you drive back there, you want to go ahead and park behind our buildings. So I was wondering if, if you could go ahead and leave it as, leave it as it is and get a variance not to put brick up.
So I, I do want to understand the reason, because I'm, I'm really not understanding. The reason the wrong material was put up was whose fault?
It was not the wrong material. If you, if you, I just want to leave it as it is, because...
The material doesn't meet design review or site plan approval.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's the wrong material?
Yes. It's the wrong material. Well, we had it, and we went ahead and put it up.
Did you put it up knowing it was the wrong material?
No.
Okay, I want to understand. At what point was, and who put up the wrong material?
It, this is a metal building, and we put up the siding. If you want to go ahead and break it, we can go ahead and break it with the material, with the, over the siding. So we went ahead and used it, used the material that we had purchased from Mr. Puri. And if the committee disapproves it, we, we can go ahead and put the brick on top of the metal building, metal, metal siding. But it's, it's really waste of money and waste of time. We'd like to go ahead and not to...
Who, who ordered the metal siding to be...
Thank you, that's where I'm getting with it.
It came with a package that we purchased from...
That you purchased?
Yes.
But you didn't know from the people you bought it from that that was a required exterior design review that had to be met?
They told us, they sold us the existing material.
But they didn't tell you that it has to be brick and Evis? The party you bought this from, did they ever share with you it has to be brick and Evis?
Well, our architect, when he, he designed it...
Yes, but that's not my question.
Yes, sir.
You, you bought this from somebody?
Yes, sir.
Did that somebody share with you that when you finish it, it's got to meet design review? Did you know that?
When, when we purchased it, we didn't know that the siding for the building was common with the package, so...
You, you thought you were just building, buying a structure, and that's all?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
A roof and frame.
Oh, yeah.
To finish it.
So the, anyway, I want to make sure I'm understanding here, is the party that, that the approval was given, was it Mr. Arab?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, he's, yeah, that's, he's, he was, and so his architect drew up the plans, he bought the building, I guess...
He bought some type of package?
He bought, yeah. Yes.
But somebody failed to tell the people that delivered the package?
Or the people, yeah, whoever is...
But some, somewhere there's a disconnect.
Somebody ordered the wrong package.
But you said you bought it from BBB Auto, which is two doors down from here.
That's why I asked him where he got it from.
And so it wasn't ordered, it was, they already had it, and they just, and they just, he just bought it and said, well, you're not using it, cannot buy it.
Yeah.
And they moved it.
Without being told the requirement for design review, that was my question.
Correct.
Well, he was told, because it was part of the, I mean, all the plans that came to this, this commission.
So he knew about it?
Yes. The plans that came to this commission.
Now we're getting somewhere.
Yeah.
I feel like Judge Judy up here.
This may be a question for Mitchell or Kevin. When we initially approved this storage facility, it was just for storage only?
It's storage for one of the...
Furniture places.
For one of the buildings, so it's the users in the building, yeah.
Okay. And it was not going to have water or sewer or anything in it?
I believe, I believe that's right, yeah.
I think there is facilities in it now.
Okay.
So, because I've actually went by the, went by the building.
Yeah. I, it's, and it may, I, you know, I can't recall for sure about the bathroom facility, but it was just for storage. I mean, it was what it was set up for. It may have, building code may have required to have some, at least one facilities or something like that on there. I don't know exactly, because it is detached from the main building and all that, so...
For your information, we did install two bathrooms and a riser room, sprinkler system, all kinds of things that it became requirement, and we went ahead and installed.
I think the sprinklers was because of the...
So we do have.
Right. Yes, mattresses, that sort of thing.
And the restrooms were not.
Yes, sir.
So if I heard you correctly, you said it's easy for you to go ahead and put your brick up over the siding?
We can do that, sure. But, you know...
I'm, I'm going to tell you where I'm going to come from on this.
Yes, sir.
I hate that you bought the wrong thing, and that you got the wrong thing up, but we've got a precedent here. And to me, anyway, design review is an important factor in what we do. So I would have to stand on the side of asking you to go ahead and meet design review as it was approved. That's just me, and I would make that motion, Jim.
Okay.
So it would be, basically, it's a motion to deny the request.
To deny what the request is.
Right.
Based on not meeting...
And stick with the original approval.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion to deny, based on not meeting the original approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to decline. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's denied. And we're sorry for...
The confusion.
The confusion. Thank you. We are now on to December Bond Review Report.
Yeah, we just got two tonight. One is one we've seen before. Did get a little bit of an update on that one. They are look at that, looking at selling the lot that this small sewer extension would serve in the spring, or very early next year. And it would be installed then, so would recommend the six-month extension just to allow for that to happen hopefully next spring. And then the next one is Stewart's Creek cottages. This is a bond we've had for one year. Still several items to finish there, but they are also only about 35% built out. To talk to the developer, they don't have an official timeline, but they are expecting that the last lot would close in March, and basically through the end of next year, that the builder would finish those, the rest of those units next year, that are, the lots that aren't built yet, so. And so they did request a one-year extension. We've only had this one for one year, so we are, we're fine with a one-year extension on that one, and that's all we've got.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the bond review report? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond review.
I have a motion to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bond review report is approved. Staff comments or other business?
I don't have anything.
Catherine? Charles, would you like to speak tonight?
Sure.
I didn't think so. Jeffrey L.?
Nothing from me, sir.
Anything from the commission? This is our last meeting before Christmas, so I think I can speak for everyone up here, for community, wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And with that, we're adjourned.